Call the meeting to order, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission April 30th, 2019, meeting at 6 o'clock. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the March 26, 2019, regular meeting.
Make a motion we approve?
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Our first two items have been deferred, so we'll be moving on to number three under old business. Final plat, lot 15 and 16 of Homewood Estates, Section 1, requested by Barge Solutions. Property located at 113 Cheerful Place, tax map 17J, Group A, parcel 15 and 16. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by MA Investments LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. Applicant is requesting to combine two lots on Cheerful Place. These are lots 15 and 16 of Homewood Estates, Section 1. Property is already zoned I-2 and has been for quite a while. The total area of the property in question is .9 acres and all the minimum setback lines were shown on the plat and also they've provided the FEMA note on the plat and there were no outstanding technical issues at the workshop two weeks ago. And see the overhead here and all this area is zoned I-2. And Cheerful Place is off of Bain, Bain Drive. And you see the structure there, it was built approximately a year and a half ago, actually probably closer to two years ago. And that's a house there that is also being used by the company and that's all the pictures show. That concludes the report and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. There's a technical item plat we'll go to, Board of Zoning Appeals on April 30th?
Yes, sir, it did and it was passed at Boza.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item, number four, under new business. Site plan, 438 Dick Buchanan Street B, requested by Womble and Associates, PLLC. Property located at 438 Dick Buchanan Street, tax map 14, parcel 7.03. I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Dell Homes. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This property is for the 438B Dick Buchanan and they are requesting site plan approval. And currently the property is zoned I-1, which is the entire area in light blue is zoned I-1. And they are proposing to build a new building that would be 2,800 square feet. And this, the total acreage on this plan is 2.4 acres. And you can see on the plan that was submitted, there is an existing building here and that building is planned to be demolished. If the site plan is approved, that building would go away. And there's some other buildings on the site you can see. And there are, there were not really many technical items from the workshop and I think the one technical item, about five feet buffer around that parking lot has... Answer questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Also appreciate the engineer working with us on this to address the issues and with that I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from this far. Womble and Associates, property located at 5227 Murphysboro Road, tax map 15M, Group F, parcel 7. C-1 Government and Public Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Grace Evangelical Church. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is a site plan approval for a church. This is an existing building at 5227 Murphysboro Road. You see, it is zoned C-1, which is governmental and public services. So that's a little different from C-2 that we usually see. So this is the existing building. It does have a hip roof on it and there's quite a bit of brick around the building. Has a really deep overhang here, but all of this is brick on all four sides. And so this view is looking northwest toward Nashville. And this is the rear of the building. And then this is the side, nine acres. And they do have an access off of Stones River Road and then it can be accessed off Murphysboro Road also. And currently the overlay... It's also been a county clerk office, so a variety of uses. And they are proposing some... And other than that, because it is an existing building, not a great...
Questions or comments from the board on this item?
I have a question. Is, this is the building that the fire marshal indicated that he was waiting on an exclusion from the state fire marshal. Do we have any information on that?
I haven't been informed one way or the other. Mr. Womble at our prompting has included revisions for fire line if it becomes necessary. So really they wouldn't be able to pull their building permits until we get clearance from the state, but the site plan can advance, so at least this part of it is complete.
Very good. And there's a note on here that says the plan... I know we discussed at a workshop, did we discuss what type of fencing? I did not?
I don't believe so.
In the overlay area, it specifies on the type of fencing.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, sir?
Danny Womble, 40 Middleton Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. On the, I guess first the fencing question, do you have any idea what type of fencing you're going to propose?
We have that noted on the plan. It's going to be a metal fence along the back and then where there's already chain link fence on the front, we're going to fill in with chain link fence in the areas where it's, where the fencing is missing.
So it's a decorated fencing on Stones River?
Mm-hmm.
And that it's going to be fixed chairs for those 240 as the fire marshal requires.
And you've worked with him to make sure for the fire line and everything, correct?
We did. We've designed the fire line according to their requirements.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Well, I appreciate you working with us on the rain garden entrance. Can you just explain that a little bit? I know it's drawn in here, but just explain the rest of the board how that's going to... We all know that catches a lot of water that, that area there. Just want to just get your, your forethought of how that's going to improve that area around that, on the junction there of Stones River Road.
I'd be glad to. On sheet C-2, which is the site plan, on the far left side near the top of the sheet is where Stones River Road frontage is for this track. We have the fence and the gates for, for the site moved back from the edge of Stones River Road, which leaves room for a car to pull in there and stop and be out of the traffic flow of Stones River Road in front of the gates. On each side of that drive, we had parking that really was dead parking. So we are removing that parking. I think it was three spaces on each side. And then in that area, we will excavate out all of the gravel and the asphalt down to natural ground. And then at that natural ground level, we... On that sheet C-2 and shown on each side. And you can see also behind the gate, there's two lines, it's kind of a V shape and that's noted that drainage bars are to be constructed across the drive. What the drainage bars do is they divert the flow coming down the drive into each of these rain gardens. So that way there won't be any water from this site running out into Stones River Road. All the water's going to be deflected into these rain gardens. And then on sheet C-4, detail number two is a cross-section detail showing the construction of this rain. So what happens here is you excavate down... amended soil that's going to be 18 inches thick. This amended soil is going to have a lot of organics in it and it's going to be very porous. So it's going to store water in the voids in the soil. It's depressed on the surface, so water will pond on the surface. The water then will... It's going to have a number of plants that are planted in it that is shown on the way the water garden works. And this detail is actually taken from the regulations that you have here in the city for water garden design. So this is going to allow that water to be deflected into this depressed area. It's going to soak very quickly into this 18-inch-deep section of amended soil and then hopefully will, will percolate into the underlying natural soils. But it's, it's going to give you a nice buffer between sheet flow coming off the site that 'll get trapped there before it goes into Stones River Road. So we thought this was the best design to accommodate the comment that we got about the drainage.
Well, we appreciate that. I mean, I think it, it looks very good. Obviously we like to see it work, but I'm sure it will. So my, my second question was, asked at the workshop was, the overhang you're going to add to the building, calling it on the front, so let's see, six-inch raised concrete island, is that going to be an overhang over the top to get people in and out of the building when it's raining or?
Yeah, it's just the roof, it's extended roof.
So is, is the, the concrete island and the roof the same color or same text, same, same?
Exactly. Will be matching the existing material and, and slope.
Other questions, Mr. Cuts?
No, that's it, thanks.
Any further questions from the board? Mr. Holliday?
The fencing that's existing, chain link, what would be involved in also making it the architectural metal chain link? Or, I'm sorry, the architectural metal fencing as opposed to the chain link? So that the fencing around the entire property was considered?
Well, the majority of the fencing is chain link. So what we're doing, we're doing the architecturally, the, around that area. But the new...
It's indicating that fencing to the east along the school easement is also called out as proposed metal fence, which is the same call out as on Stones River Road. And so I was interpreting proposed metal fence on each end of the property...
Will be decorative.
Will be decorative.
Correct.
The fence, though, that goes across the southern face of the property, that's going to be visible from Murphysboro Road and that's going to be chain link. Am I understanding correctly?
It's existing chain link, correct.
We really don't have any site pictures that show that, though, do we?
The aerial might show it.
Let's go to the aerial.
Under the blue line?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's there, it's not like in your face, it's not that visible. But yeah, that portion of the blue line along the south, at parallels, Murphysboro Road, portion of that is chain link.
Right. On the north side, you know, where it's screened by vegetation... I just wonder about consistency where we have an architectural metal at the entrance and architectural metal along the, along the easement there where the school exits, but then chain link in between up against our, our other merchants. I know it's late in the game, should have brought that up in the, in our work session, but I noticed it tonight.
Well, I think the difference is, and, and the thinking from a design standpoint was, where are you going to have the traveling public that is going to be right adjacent to the project, then have the, the metal fence, which is along Stones River Road and then through, through the easement going to the school, you have a lot of public traveling through there. So on both ends where the traveling public is right beside it, we have the decorative fence. Then the rest of it was basically existing fence and it's really at the rear of other lots, so it really isn't that visible. So from a design standpoint, we were dealing with where the traffic is and where it's close to the boundary of the property.
Aesthetics of it.
Any other questions or comments?
And on the sprinklers, have you heard from the state fire marshal's office on the exemption?
Actually, I spoke with the state fire marshal earlier today and he did state that the project did meet the requirement for what they call a no review letter. I would, we would need to request it. There were two criteria. One, if we could show that the space, the occupant load would less than 300, which we were providing 240 seats. And then we've got adequate means of egress to the outside, we've got in excess of what's required. So we need to state that and then request from him for a no review.
So I've seen there's, there's five exits on the, the building in, in one of the areas. I guess that would be where the sanctuary may or may not be. So I think that's what he's talking about, right? On the means of egress?
Means of egress are the exits. And so, and if we can prove that we've got less than 300 people in means of egress, yeah, then we request for a no review letter. But we have to do a formal request.
That's right. So I make a motion that we approve with the format of the state fire marshals, that they turn in their letter of request and it's approved with the exemption of the sprinklers.
So as submitted?
As submitted with the...
Submission with the fire marshal.
With their letter going to the fire marshal's office.
And we have a motion on the table. Everybody understand that? Motion.
This one understands. So are you saying before they can move in, do you get the approval? Or, I mean, at what, what stage do we want?
Before they get their CO, we need to make sure the fire marshal's office is signed off on this.
You're comfortable with that?
Yes, we have to do that.
We have to do that anyways. Very good. So that's the motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next slide. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number six. Site plan, lot 8, Southway Industrial Park, Nestrick Properties, requested by Warren and Associates, property located on Bain Drive, tax map 17, parcel 7.16, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Roger Lloyd, JKW LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This application is for a site plan for the lot 8 of the Southway Industrial Park located on Bain Drive. And you can see here in the overhead image that this lot is vacant, there's currently no building on the site. And it is zoned I-2 and it's part of a larger area that is also zoned I-2. And these are some site photos of the lot. And you can see the roof line in the distance, these are the new Panatoni buildings that are, well, they're nearing completion, they're very, very close. They've got a few, a few more things to do, but, so those are the neighboring properties to the south and east. And then in the distance, this is piles concrete off of Jones. And so I'll go back just to this overhead picture. So the current, or, well, not current, now this Bain has become a through street with the Mason Road Business Park, but this is what it did look like. You can see the cul-de-sac here. So that is now a through street that goes all the way up to Mason Road. And so that would be where I was standing here in the new part of the roadway when I took these photos. As for the plan, they are proposing to construct six new warehouses and they would vary in size. Four of those six will be 12,000 square feet in size and two of those would be 9,600 square feet. And you can see here, this is the, would be the entrance to development and then this building A, B, C, and D, and so forth. And see the parking is proposed in front and they have a ADA accessible space for each building. And then this is the new sidewalk they are proposing that runs the entire frontage of the site. And the entire site is 4.51 acres and they are providing 30 parking spaces where 18 are required. And that covers the highlights and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative here this evening for this project? If you'd come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, sir?
Jerry Warren with Warren and Associates, we're representing Mr. Bill Nestrick, who owns the property, so.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Warren, is there listening on here? I don't see it about garbage dumpsters. I know that was one thing that was brought up at the workshop.
Yes, sir.
I don't see that on here.
And on the bottom of sheet C-2, we have put a note there after we worked, discussed this with the owner, these, each of these buildings will be treated as a horizontal property regime. And what the owner's preference to do there is to address the dumpsters in the private area that's basically the purview of each one of the lease, lessees. And we can change that or update that as needed, but that was, that will be addressed in the HPR documents.
Okay. So it's, I mean, essentially, so it's going to be, is it going to be in between?
Yes, sir.
These buildings and then, you know, where they put it will be up to the individual groups?
Yes, sir. And so, I mean, some, I think the thought process there was some may need smaller, some may not even actually need that type of service, so we weren't sure exactly what to provide.
Okay.
Is this the property that's going to carry the sidewalks along Bain?
Yes, yeah.
I guess I'm still concerned about trash collection. Yeah, I, I think that there are concerns with, with traffic bollards, with screening, with various things concerning dumpster locations. If they're going to ever be present, then we should see them on the site plan here and not just a, a written reference that will determine that at some point in the future. I may be missing something in the HPR provisions that...
Well, typically, horizontal property regimes are a little bit tricky in this because it's a cart before the horse, so to, so to speak. These are basically built on the potential that someone will come into them. I mean, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Nestrick's probably got some clients lined up for him, but he's, he probably doesn't know exactly who's coming into each building. So if there was, just for instance, an industrial recycler that wanted to come in, they would probably need, you know, a much larger bin than, for instance, a woodworking shop or something of that nature. So their individual, you know, waste needs are kind of, kind of going to be dictating some of that. And of course, other thing is with horizontal property regime, site plan does pass, they'll have to bring back that horizontal property regime for approval since it's kind of a final plat is basically how that operates. And we could, you know, look at the requirements that they put in that, you know, horizontal property regime for each tenant to provide for those waste services such as if the tenant does have to have a large waste receptacle, they can, they'll have to screen it according to the covenants put in that HPR. So really it would be the covenants put in the HPR.
Do those covenants come before this board?
Yes, HPR would have to come before this board and the covenants would be reviewed by staff typically, but they'd be provided if you'd like to see them.
I almost would have liked it designated somewhere for, yeah, if we approve it as is, can they not just put it anywhere and we have no control over that?
Well, if Mr. Nestrick was to maintain ownership of the entire site, he could if you approved, approved it as is, but since that's not been his intention, you know, it would have to come back for that HPR. So, you know, we could, you could definitely add a note if you wanted to or something of that, that nature. It's just, like I said, these, these con, different states call them different things, condo regimes, HPRs, they're, they're a little tricky just on the finer points because it's the same with meter sizing. We, we don't know what kind of water usage they're going to have, so I can't, can't size a meter before we get tenants.
Kind of shooting in the dark a little bit, so to say.
I'm sorry, I'm Bill Nestrick. The, the private element, as they call it in a horizontal property regime, is straight across their, their building and then the, then the outside storage area between the buildings. And in the HPR, they're required to have the dumpster in that space. In other words, we don't tell them, you need to have it in the back or the front or the, or the side, but we don't have like a common area for the dumpsters. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
There's not like one area of like six dumpsters in the back.
Right, it's not a communal area.
Right, it's not.
With that said, if, if we have multiple buildings and they each use their, their common area, would that defer or alter emergency vehicles going around the buildings if we don't know where the dumpsters are? I mean, like you said, we may have one, one supplier needing, needing four dumpsters and one supplier needing one dumpster.
And then pretty much for that very reason, I would have liked to have seen it shown, like this area at the back of the building is where the dumpsters need to be placed.
Right, we can do that, we can do that because most people wanted them near the front anyway where they can be picked easy and taken out.
Gotcha.
I guess that becomes my concern is if they're near the front, then I want them architecturally screened. If they're buried in the back, then maybe I can be okay with them not being architecturally screened in an industrial area. But that becomes, you know, the aesthetic concern for me as a planning commissioner.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, we can show them up, we can sh...
And I don't see any issue with adding that if that is a comment that we can kind of show this private area and kind of indicate generally where that would be and, and address your concerns because I understand that, so.
Or with, or with a comment that specifically says in the HPR review that waste management will be specifically addressed. If that would be appropriate, I can see the intent... If that would be appropriate, I can see the intent with the HPR note here on the plans, you know, that, that this will come back before us. I just don't want it to come back before us and us not make a, a proper assessment of waste management.
We can go ahead and show it on the plans and show a simple...
Well, we have to, we try not to do contingencies, so we'd have to go back to workshop, ask for a deferral, the way Mr. Holliday's proposing. We could move forward, make a note that it's going to be shown in the HPR.
Okay.
That the dumpsters need to be towards the rear of the property unscreened, towards the front of the property screened.
I would just be that, that waste management would be specifically addressed in the HPR review. And then that would be a note to staff that they would raise that to the planning commission's attention, whether it's in text, in the covenants and restrictions, or whether it, you know, shows up on individual site plans.
Sure.
So, since I've been stated there, if commissioners are at ease, my motion then would be to accept as presented with waste management specifically addressed in the future HPR review.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for working with us. Item number seven, site plan, spirit of ministries, spirit of life ministries requested by ASME Tech Engineering, property located at 253 Stones River Road, tax map 51L, group B, parcel 24, R1 low-density residential zoning district, property owned by Ministerios Espiritu de Vida. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property went to the Board of Zoning Appeals in May of 2018, so a couple of weeks, it'll be a year since they went to Boza and they requested a special exception for a church and they were granted that request. There is a house on the property where the red dot is and you'll see on the plans that that house is staying. And then they're proposing to build quite a large building here to the rear of the property, which would be toward the west. Now you can see a photo there, they've got quite a large open space on this property and quite a bit of that will become parking as well for the new church. And then this is a look at the house, it's got a lot of large trees around it, large shade trees. And there's another angle that shows the house. The new building is proposed to be 24,380 square feet and the total parcel is 5.45 acres. And they are providing 227 parking spaces where 191 are required. So it's quite a bit more parking than is required. And this is the plan and the plan, this is from the workshop and the plans that you all have tonight, Planning Commission asked for more screening to one of these existing homes and that screening has been shown on the landscape plans. And also, a planning comment was the dumpster pad, which is now in this corner in the back. And just a note on that, generally speaking, in the planning world, you want the dumpster to be in the back. And I know that came up on the last item. In looking at this, it's alwa, there's always a winner and a loser, it seems. If I've got a baby and several of us in this room have had small children and they're sleeping and that truck comes at 6:00 in the morning, I'm not a big fan, but I just throw that out there and y'all can chew on it. Because there's no perfect spot to put the dumpster, but that just came to mind when I was reviewing the plan. And also, there's some turn lanes that the Planning Commission requested and they are shown on the plan. And I know some of you all had some questions about those. Now, there is an existing city sidewalk that's been here for a long time and that is shown. And then they're installing this sidewalk on Mason Circle back here, so.
And the water in that area, prior to the city sidewalk, it was really bad, it used to come across Stones River. And then they installed the city sidewalk and the water was, you know, carried on down into the stormwater drains. With the, the turning lane, with that, and the, they opening up that curbage there on that property, will that change the direction of that water?
Uh, there are changes to the direction of the water just because the storm drainage system that's being located on the site, all of the impervious surface on the site except for the allowable bypass is being directed toward that storm, that detention pond, so it'll all, the post-development conditions do not exceed the pre-development conditions, at least for the flow, so the directionality...
When they put so much asphalt in the residential backing up to the yards, do they have to put one of the water quality units in?
It, Metro actually follows a different standard than City of Laverne. They use a, I believe it's called LID, land intensity development. They do require water quality units more often than we do. We, we allow different things in lieu of, this, this is actually designed with...
Rocky LeBlanc, 711 Hickerson Drive, White House, Tennessee, representative of ZIMTEC Engineering.
Perfect, sir. There's two items that have not been addressed on this.
What's they on the hand?
A hundred-foot minimum construction entrance and sheet C-1.1 shows removal of existing sidewalk and replacement following proposed turn lane, construction driveway, and to have ADA ramps.
I didn't see those ones on the backside.
Well, we're going to get through it, sir.
No problem. Obviously appreciate it.
Normally, we have to vote and if there's technical items and then they fit, the item will generally fail. Would you like to defer it so we can go back to workshop? Would you like to, for us to proceed forward?
Can you say that again?
Normally, when there's technical items, the, the item will generally fail. So if we vote on it and there's a technical item, it's generally a problem. Would you like to come back to the workshop so that we can get these two items addressed and come, so we can come back to next month's meeting and vote on it?
If I have to, yeah.
I think that would be the best course of action, so if, if you would request a formal deferral so we can address these items, then we'll, we'll proceed forward at next workshop and more than likely, you'll have them ready for us at workshop.
Just revise them for the workshop.
Yes, sir, that's it. So you'd like to deferral, sir? Okay, so we're going to have a deferral on this item so that we can correct these two items and we will see you at workshop next month and get these to knock down, but they're very light, so it's not too bad. It's just not something we can do in-house today. Thank you, sir, thank you for your time. Items number eight. Final plat, second re-subdivision of Lot 3, Section 1, Waldron Business Park requested by Bird Surveying, property located on Waldron Road, tax map 17, parcel 5.01, I-2 heavy industrial and C-2 highway service zoning districts, property owned by Bramco Properties, Inc. Mr. Logan.
I believe this is the, the group that didn't come last month, or, I'm sorry, they didn't come to workshop, so we haven't heard anything from them. They didn't resubmit, so this is the one on Waldron Road.
Let me take a look at my notes here. Any questions or comments from the board on this item and then we'll proceed forward?
I mean, Mo, can we just contact them for next month, say, hey, someone needs to be here to, to communicate with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'll reach out to them.
Just reach out to them and if, if not, I mean, you know, we need to move forward, but at least, at least give them a chance to, to show up and, and discuss this with us.
We're going to give them a deferral in this item? Or are we proceeding forward?
I would recommend a deferral.
Yeah, I mean, we have no option, they weren't here and so, yeah.
Staff recommends deferral.
Yeah, part of the, part of what's going on is they're, nobody's familiar with this company, I, we've never met them, I don't know who they...
Excellent, thank you. Item number nine has deferred, we'll be moving on to number 10. Site plan, Carter Lumber of the South requested by Reagan Smith, property located at 444 Dick Buchanan Street, tax map 14, parcel 70, I-1 light industrial zoning district, property owned by Carter Lumber Company. Mr. Logan.
This request is site plan approval for Carter Lumber of the South, which is, has an existing facility today on Dick Buchanan and this is at 444 Dick Buchanan. And currently, there are several properties on the, several structures on the property, you can see those in the photographs, and they store a lot of materials and items on site. And currently with this plan, they're proposing a new warehouse that would be 24,982 square feet. And the new structure would be for storage of windows and doors. Also proposed are two other structures that would help keep lumber out of the elements. And these are not enclosed buildings. There's only one building, which would be the warehouse, that's enclosed and the others are not fully enclosed, so they are providing nine parking spaces where seven are required and none of this site lies in any overlay district. Again, it is zoned I-1 light industrial. And you can see here on the plan, they are proposing, so this is a new 30-foot wide concrete drive that would come into the site. And then this section here, they're adding 20 feet of new asphalt and in that 20 feet would be nine new parking spaces. And then this is Dick Buchanan, so, so this is up front, this is close to Dick Buchanan. And then, go back to the overall, so there are other building here, I think it's called Building 5 on the plan, and then Building 4, and then this building to the side, beach of the east side. So taking together these three buildings and then the warehouse are a part of what they're proposing in the plan. And then they have a green area here, which is also a part of the plan that they're proposing. And there were some planning technical comments from two weeks ago, had to do with the ADA parking, but those can be removed from the report due to the fact that there's existing parking already on the site and they have existing ADA space, they already have that on, in this area up here next to Dick Buchanan, so those no longer apply the planning comments. And I don't think there's any outstanding engineering comments, so that completes the report, thanks.
Thank you very much. All technical items are completed, excuse me. Mr. Logan?
I just concur that they are putting the sidewalk in down the street.
Yeah, I thought there was an issue with the fence, their property lines, with the, if they put the sidewalk in.
The sidewalk is shown and there are several notes. One is right here, it says adjust the sidewalk to accommodate for existing utilities, so I take it that that sidewalk will meander in and out, but I would expect that.
Could someone from this project please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record? And as a side note, having been out on this property, there are some very large, deep boxes, like utility boxes, that are basically in the path of this driveway, so I do know that personally. Name and address for the record, sir.
Matt Lackey, Reagan Smith, our office address is 315 Woodland Street, Nashville.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board?
So just, just want to talk about the sidewalk you're going to put in, obviously and the obstacles, just, just run through that in your mind of what, what you envision to see here.
Yeah, so the sidewalk in discussion with Adam was, it's intended to be best fit. We're trying to provide, I think in theory, a grass strip between the edge of pavement and the sidewalk as, as much as you can, just for safety and comfort of walking. And then where you do have utility poles, water meters, various things, you know, we're going, we're going to have to meander a little bit to avoid those, but in most cases, we have a grass strip with a six-foot sidewalk shown for the entire length of the property, so.
Okay. And going into the, it's on the same plot and the same address, the other...
It is the same parcel.
It is the same parcel, thank you for clarifying that. Very good. Any other questions? Adam, in the past, when they have to go around and up and down around, you know, meter boxes and things, do they, do we, are we requiring any kind of shrubbery or anything on the outside of their fence or...
It is not a requirement in our zoning ordinance for there to be landscaping outside of the fence and meandering is just, you know, typical practice.
It's part of it, huh?
Okay. You really, you really can't move, you know, fire hydrants, water lines, utility poles, just to make the sidewalk.
Well, I mean, just having that much sidewalk is, it really helped to the city.
We are covering ground on Dick Buchanan, that is for sure. Any other questions or comments?
No, with all the items being addressed and the items being looked out, we'll make a motion to accept it submitted.
I second. We have a motion to accept it submitted and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, thank you, gentlemen. Item number 11, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, amend the zoning ordinance, amend, and amend 5.056.2, amend to remove exclusions in overlay district presented by Ms. Mayor Cole. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. In your packets for tonight and you have the copy of the language for the new amendment to zoning ordinance and also those were emailed out last week to all the members. So this, in summary, this ordinance will remove the possibility of an existing structure to be excluded from the requirements of overlay district, the architectural requirements of overlay district.
And what exactly does that mean?
Basically, what it means right now is if, if there's a building on Murphysboro Road that, I mean, it could be any age, but usually it, you know, we're talking a building from 20 to 50 years old, that they, when they, if they don't propose to increase the size of their building about 50% or more, then they, they could basically build 49% of their footprint and it could look, it could be all metal if they wanted it to be.
We're, we're essentially removing exemption. And for grandfathering buildings is really kind of what I think the spirit of the ordinance was when written. However, as we're trying to improve the general appearance of Murphysboro Road, you know, what, what we've seen is, which haven't necessarily improved those buildings in any, you know, aesthetically pleasing way. So that's really the purpose of the change in the ordinance is to remove that exemption.
Gives us more teeth.
It gives us board the, the ability to review those. And overall, this is to help improve the look and feel for Murphysboro Road.
Thanks. Very good. Any other questions or comments in regards to this?
Motion to approve as recommended by staff.
We would be making a recommendation, Mr. Holliday, so a motion to give a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, is that not correct?
Motion to, motion to make a favorable recommendation.
I'll second the favorable recommendation.
We have a motion to send a favorable recommendation and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, next item. Number 12, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, amendment to zoning ordinance, amend 4.070, standards for signs prohibit billboards and define billboards as off-site signs presented by Ms. Standards for signs prohibit billboards and define billboards as off-site signs presented by Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this ordinance addresses the sign part or the sign code. And it seems like historically, there's always been language in there that prohibits off-premise advertising, which fits most cities in Tennessee. Most do prohibit off-premise advertising. But it failed to go a step further, which was to include all signs, no matter what they're called, as off-premise advertising. So what this does is cleans up the sign ordinance and makes, it treats all signs equally and fairly, which is if it's off-premise advertising, it's off-premise advertising. It doesn't matter if it's 775 square feet or 20 square feet. So, and this is, it's been a long time in the making. It's been, I'm going to say I've been working on it between six and nine months to get the language right. And one thing, when you read through, you'll see, we had to make accommodation for our commercial and industrial sites because they currently allow a pole. And the definition that was in there for billboard was a sign up to 775 square feet. So because every new retail site and industrial site will allow a pole sign already of 125 square feet, if we didn't put some new definitions in there, then essentially, every new business would have a billboard on their site, even though it would only be 125 square feet. So the, the new definition of billboard is any sign that exceeds 125 square feet. And that's in there as well. And there's some tables in that sign ordinance that deal with some of the billboards. And so that, those tables may be taken out, and that's in section three of the ordinance. And, and then sections four through eight, excuse me, four through seven, were just parts of like, not residential, but like C2 and some of the other commercial zones where it, it'll list all these uses that are allowed, but then it'll say use is prohibited. And then it will actually call out and say, now, this is current language. So it'll say, like in R1 or A1 district, it says, "Billboard's prohibited." Well, all of that had to be cleaned up as well because billboards were being allowed in certain districts, but not in others. And so there was, there's no need to really say that they're prohibited in, you know, A1 or R1 or, so that's what sections four through seven do. And Nick and I looked at it quite a bit and went over it. And so I think, I think it's a really, I think it's, it's written well, and I think it'll serve the city well.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board? I noticed Mr. Coats is in his book over there, so.
Yeah, I have a question on this. So let's just say you have a shopping center, and you have multiple residents in the shopping center. With these changes that will allow them to each, if they're, let's say they're on Murphysboro Road, and there's a Subway, you know, hair salon and everything, this will allow them all to put up a sign out on Murphysboro Road because it's the same plot.
Oh, the way the sign ordinance reads now, you can have one pylon per lot.
Right. But with this, with, with the changes, it will give them, it's, it gives them a lot of space to, let's say, I'm not going to name the businesses, but you know, there's businesses in Laverne, they may be the, the drive in the shopping center. Of course, they want their big sign out there. Well, if they have 50,000 square feet leased, you know, they're the big guys. And then let's just say the, the little small 12-seat restaurant, well, they want a big sign out there that would give them the, the same right. And then there's, there's nine residents in the shopping center. It gives them all the same right to put, we could have nine different signs instead of the one marquee.
But you've got one sign per lot.
You can only have one sign per lot as it stands now.
Per, per platted lot, per parcel.
So Subway, and a tax service, and a nail store, and are all on the same, in the same strip mall, they'd have to find a way to put it on one sign that cannot exceed 30 feet. Because 30 feet's the max height of a pylon sign. So if they can get all their, if there's, say that there's like 12, they'd have to have six on one side, six on the other.
So it doesn't open it up for them all to do it?
No.
They're still limited to that.
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a dozen pylon signs out there, basically, is what Mr.
Yeah, and I think there's something in there too that says they can't be spaced within 100 feet of each other. Something to that effect.
If they had the existing marquee sign up, would they take that sign down and put up a new one?
I mean, they can do, they can reface all the time without going to any board.
Right.
They just go to, to the building office, building codes and get, and they can reface. So they, we see a lot of that. But if they make it taller or make it bigger, then they can't do that without.
What we're seeing on Murphysboro Road, it looks like a lot of the places that were one rental spot, you know, now they're three rental spots. They go in, they're, they're putting their prefab walls and, you know, and then the address is 1751 Murphysboro.
A, B, C.
A, B, C, D. And, and it just seems like it's never going to stop. So they would only allow, they would only be allowed to put one big sign with each business on there.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they could not have multiple, what some people call pylon signs, that, that stand up on their own, like close to the street. They, they can only have one per lot. So that, this doesn't change that.
That will stay.
That stays, yeah.
Great. Questions, comments, Mr. Coats?
No, I, I was just going through, I was just quality controlling some of the numbers and verification, and I believe it to be correct. So with that, I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to Mayor Alderman for the ordinance.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion for favorable recommendation to Mayor and Alderman, and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Number 13. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Amend the zoning ordinance, amend 5.050. Commercial districts, remove auto repair from commercial districts presented by Mayor Cole. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance addresses auto repair and the continuing high number of requests that the city's getting for auto repair in its commercial districts. So what this ordinance does, and it's not unlike other cities, there are several that I know of that have dealt with this, and they've had to do the same thing. So what this ordinance does is it removes auto repair as a use in the three commercial districts that allowed it, which are C2, C3, C4. And it removes it from there, and it only allows it in the city's industrial districts, which would be I-1, I-2, or possibly I-3. But it, it removes it from C2, C3, C4, and it, it was not allowed in C1 anyway. But, and that's, that's what this ordinance does. And different cities have, they've tried, I guess, different, different things. And I know a city I used to work in, they had, they went through this, they did this. And then this person showed up and they did pinstriping and window tinning. And it was like, what's going to happen? And so in the planning department, we were like, well, they're going to open their business. Because that's not auto repair. Pinstriping and window tinning. So, but anyway, there's always, it's just the nature of the beast, I guess. But.
We can tighten it up. We can't fix everything.
That's right, that's right. Yeah.
With, with this ordinance, I'm a little confused on, if someone wants to come into Laverne and, and build a $600,000 shop, like a Firestone, or, you know, Tyro, what they did in Smyrna, you know, they're already a.
Those are auto service.
So what's the difference in auto service and auto repair?
It is very poorly defined as our current ordinance states. The line that staff has typically drawn, which we're, we deal in interpretation. So the planners' interpretations, if it is to be challenged in court of law, tend to hold a fair degree of significance. But our interpretation has been auto repair is basically anything that physically improves the vehicle. So that you can't do in less than, you know, four hours. So auto repair would be taking an engine out and rebuilding it, rebuilding transmissions, major bodywork, major paint shop type activities. Whereas auto service would be, okay, you can go get your tires changed in two to three hours. You can get your oil changed, your window tinning, pinstriping, washing a vehicle, if you want to call that auto service. That's, once again, it is poorly defined, and this is, you know, kind of based on staff's interpretation.
Yeah, I have a major problem with that because, for example, if you, I mean, I've actually had transmissions done at these businesses. So I feel, I want to just make sure the board is aware. We're, we're borderline discriminating against someone or, or a company that don't have enough money maybe to, to build a nicer building or something like that, because the, the same scope, the services are there. They, they both produce waste, waste streams that falls under auto repair, it falls under auto care. They both produce, dropping your, you know, they both drop your car off. Interpretation in the court of law, you're the attorney, I think will catch up to us. You know, if, if we can't define it a little bit better, maybe both ordinance needs to be changed, but that's why we have legal here. Can you give us some advice on that?
Let me just jump in. I mean, obviously, we're, we're reading through the ordinance, but I, I think what you're driving at is, I'm looking at the definition of automobile repair and automobile service. That needs to be adjusted too. This ordinance is one step. The second step would be to more clearly define repairs and service. At the moment, it, it is, we review this quite regularly at Boza, is that everyone's interpreted in different ways. So we've, we've tackled this several times through the years. It just needs to be critiqued more to get it where it needs to be. But it doesn't affect, as we're reading, I just say we need to get staff to look at the definitions to, to get them more defined of automobile repairs and automobile service.
Don't you think we need to defer this until we can put it all together?
Well, at the moment, you're going to, you're always going to have two definitions, automobile repair and automobile service. So this is primarily tackling automobile repairs.
So if we have somebody that calls it automobile service, they can leave the car sitting out front, just like they're doing now, without any issues because they have auto, you know, a service. They're doing the exact same, they're doing the exact same thing as auto repair.
The presentation is different.
It's the presentation's a little different.
But it's not based on what they're naming it. It's based on our planners' interpretation.
Our planners' interpretation is poor right now. It's, it's very poor. I'm not, I'm not saying.
We can rewrite the definitions. I mean, ma- major bodywork or paint, or, I mean, it's going to be auto repair.
But it could grow. I mean, it could grow or be taken away. You know, you, you mentioned transmission as auto repair, not auto service. I mean, there's transmission work being done on Murphysboro Road seven days a week.
And that's usually in buildings that were put in auto repair that was allowed in C2. It would be, it would be more like if you went into Midas and they said, all right, we're going to drop your axles out from under it and put new axles under your car. Well, that, that's not something Midas does because Midas is auto service. So that's, that's kind of the one I always go back to. If you can do it under a day and probably cost under 200 bucks, it's auto service. If your car's going to be out for a week, and if anybody's had car repair done lately, anything major is going to be at least a week, that's going to be an auto repair. Really, really what we get, we're getting into, and I'm, I'm maybe speaking to Bo's part of the job more, our, our ordinance is old. It's really old. Like, this is, this is straight out the 80s. You know, Big Hair was cool when our ordinance was basically adopted.
So it wouldn't make sense to.
We, we have amended it. We've, we've band-aided it a lot. And, you know, we're going to keep band-aiding it. And even once we adopt a new ordinance, we're going to find holes in it, and we'll, we'll kind of keep band-aiding as we go. But right now, we're just a wad of Band-Aids.
I understand.
This is, this is fixing a problem that we've just seen here recently, where we're seeing auto repair at Boza, and Graham can speak to it better than I can, probably every other month.
Well, and, and what's happened, and you all know, is everybody else has passed.
Everybody's closing the doors on these businesses.
And so they're finding the weakest link. It's what they're looking for. And they're finding Laverne, and, you know, the only way to stop that is to pass something.
And we're seeing a lot of that with the, the changeover that's happening in Nolan, on Nolanville Road, where a lot of that's, they're, they're looking for new locations, and we have nothing in place. So right for the picking.
I understand Mr. Church's concerns. I understand planning.
Something in place. I just think it's, like you said, interpretation. I mean, if, if a Ford dealership wants to come on Murphysboro Road and buy 25 acres and have brand-new cars, what are they going to do in their service department? Auto repair. You know, to define, how is that anything different than somebody that's wanting to relocate off of Nolanville Road?
But the thing is, with a Ford dealership, as your example, their primary source of income is not going to be from transmission repairs. It's going to be from selling vehicles.
But it is. If you go to a dealership, their number-one profit center is servicing repairs. It's not really selling the cars. That's why they do that. You know, it's, it's like.
Well, we, we currently don't have, we currently don't have anything in place, though. I know you said we did, but currently we don't. It says with this ordinance, this pulls it out of commercial. There's, under existing, they're, they're completely allowed. So there is no safeguard there.
I just think we're knocking out the mom-and-pop companies.
Well, it, it just relocates them off your, you know, if you're wanting to make Murphysboro Road better, there's.
That's all we have.
I can say this, as my father being a mechanic and growing up in the stuff, there's no way to make an auto shop look nice if you've got, you know, trash cars sitting out front, and they collect parts, and they do collect a lot of waste. You know, everything there is going to be broken and older. You're not going to see new cars sitting out in front of an auto repair shop. So really, if you're looking to improve our commercial districts, which all basically front Baldron and Murphysboro Road, auto repair doesn't, isn't really conducive to that, which is why all the surrounding cities, Murphysboro, Metro, Mount Juliet, Nolanville, Lebanon, they, they don't really allow it anymore. Basically stayed. We have no power over that because it's basically grandfathered. But, so it, it's really, they have to go to an industrial district.
So it still allows them, but in that industrial district. It doesn't, it, it doesn't stop them from just coming as a whole.
But we can't.
It's the same thing we did with many warehouses.
But we all, are, are we in agreeance or we're not in agreeance? We can't define the difference in auto service and auto repair.
Major and minor repair.
I think we're in agreement that, that it probably needs to be looked at at some point, those definitions. But I don't, I, I don't, I mean, I think it, the definitions are too different. They're, they're worded differently. And then if we want to see those refined, staff, we can work with staff to have those further refined.
But it doesn't make sense to do it at the same time?
It, it does, it does make sense to do it at the same time, but it doesn't have to be done at the same time. So, so really, we're, we're patching one hole in the boat, and then we'll move to the next hole.
Fortunately, this is just a recommendation for Mayor and Alderman board. So let's proceed forward. And let's have the attorney review this before it gets to Mayor and Alderman. We'll scrutinize it, please.
Yes.
And then let's go ahead and open the table for us to work on the definitions of auto center, auto repair, and kind of get that ball rolling as well. Is that, am I kind of in agreeance with that?
We'll move forward then. So with that, I'll make a motion to make a favorable recommendation for the ordinance as written.
And I'll second it.
We have a favorable recommendation for Mayor and Alderman as the ordinance is written, and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no. So that's ayes by everyone, no by Mr. Church. And the motion passes. We're sending a favorable recommendation to Board of Mayor and Alderman. And our final item is bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Allen.
Gentlemen, in your packet, there's a copy of our current bonds, letters of credit. The only change of significance was contact at Mr. Roy Waldron and Pinnacle Bank. They'll be extending their letter of credit on Arbor Heights Phase Two for one more year. That's really the only significant change from our last meeting. Additionally, unrelated, I have provided you guys draft copies. Additionally, unrelated, I have provided you guys draft copies of the 2040 transportation plans and that'll also have your 2040 transportation map in there. And you'll get another copy of land use plan because our consultants in over at Chifer.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And we do have a new city attorney. If you'd introduce yourself for us, please, sir.
Yes, my name's Daniel Ames. I work with Evan Cope at Hudson Reed down in Murphysboro.
Pleasure, sir. And we look forward to working with you. I'd like to thank everybody for their time. Meeting adjourned.